I know, and I still. People like me like.
She's still looking at the light. Sure we shot. I have PTSD. So now I'm PTSD. Last time was when I was trying to. So I had to keep my head in. Jane.
Hi, Esther. How you doing?
You too.
I told you that. Don't be.
There's been going.
I like this.
Is there going?
I missed last time. I don't really know.
Exactly. I like that. Hi, Mr. Bitch. I'm good. How are you? And he is a council member meeting regular.
History first.
It's not. He's not. I don't know. I'm just. Hi, Doctor. Hi, Doctor. So. Do you do? Do you do?
Yeah, they, uh, they got more land and resources than we got. In a lot of cases, they got rail service parks like TSA. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna always have a little bit of harder time there.
How's your day? Do you, you know, like that? Do you, you know, suggest? You're doing it for.
I think that's what I can tell. I, I don't get to go to meetings, but I have a reason. But nobody said anything to make it about.
Hey, Pam.
Jesse. I, I just said.
Those are our school flowers.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Mom says she's.
How are you?
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you. It will be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, it's about a hundred nine dollars.
It only took fifteen years.
Mama said, Uncle Bernard came down to take mama to the doctor yesterday for her appointments and stuff, and, um, she bumped into something.
So basically, it's March. I gotta have it. But I'm, I'm able to yell a little. Great sound.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
I got a few.
Too many.
Longer. People that are in pros is.
Awesome. All the things. It's written in the bill. Hey, guys.
I said, I'll be on the, uh, check. Economically.
People, people want to point out, there's a problem.
Yes.
They will ask what they want.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're using it. I use some of ours. Ruth used to.
Oh. No, he's, he's very nice man.
Weather, traffic.
Very engaged.
We're looking at potentially something to help transparency.
Yeah. Yeah. But he will be a face in the street by.
Well, I believe it is time for us to get started with this meeting. So, um, call this, uh, work session to order, and, uh, Mr. Tollis, if you'll start with the Q four goal setting.
Sir, mayor, council members, if you'll look under your vision, twenty twenty-five Q four goals, we have, uh, I'll, I'll cut to the chase, the, the, there's several of them wastewater treatment and the tap project are gonna be, uh, a twenty twenty-six goal as well as the A trip project, um, to be able to complete that. Um, most of those, or at least the tap and the A trip project are still with, with Albot, so there's nothing city staff can do to accelerate those, those projects. Um, wastewater treatment plant upgrades, it, it not gonna be complete. We have the design from, from Ardua. There are several pieces of that that we've had to order. Um, we continue to struggle with some supply chain issues on that. Um, if you recall, we got a three point five million dollar grant through, uh, state revolving loan fund to do those upgrades. Um, second quarter, uh, uh, let's see, uh, performance and evaluation, Allison with open enrollment going on during the fir- fourth quarter, uh, said that that was more realistic for second quarter of twenty-six. Um, we will have our quarterly nuisance property update and quarterly update on, uh, customer service experience, uh, cross-city departments at the second meeting in December. Uh, and then in the last meeting, you had a copy of the, uh, old Coppinville agreement that we received back from Enterprise City Schools, and the mayor's office is working with, um, basically our, our attorney and the school systems attorney to clarify some language in that. We should have something for you potentially by, by the second meeting in December to look at, um, and consider. That, that concludes our fourth quarter goals.
All right. Any questions? All right, then we will review the agenda for tonight's meeting. Uh, we have roll call, opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Um, then we will approve the agenda, and we will have the consideration of the consent agenda. In this consent agenda, we have contract billings for Volker Incorporated, um, contract services, seventy-one thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars for Bowieville Circle expansion. Um, poly boundary survey for Donaldson Park Parcels, forty-three hundred dollars, fine getting and associates, six thousand two hundred fifty dollars contract services, and some tribal requests for Parks and Rec and Police Department, some disposal requests. Does anyone have any questions about the consent agenda? Any pro- issues with it?
What was the seventy-one? I mean, I, I'm not aware of them.
Um, seventy-one thousand.
Yeah, what is the Bowieville Circle expansion?
I believe that was the.
That was the study, wasn't it?
This, yeah, getting, Jonathan.
The engineering study.
Isn't the, uh, Volker, uh, the engineering company for getting us ready for Bowieville Circle, is right?
Yes, sir, it is. So we, we, uh, council approved, um, middle part of, of this pa- this year, um, to do engineering and design for the western part of the Bowieville Circle, so it's about three point three miles. Um, Aldot owns the, the, uh, additional right-of-way that it would, uh, be required, so no, no right-of-way acquisition would be needed. So we asked what would help accelerate the project if we get, receive federal, uh, grant money or Aldot decided to fund the project. And so engineering and design is about an eighteen-month to twenty-four-month process. Um, so you may have seen a, a press release from Senator Britt's office, there was about fifteen point six million dollars that was put in congressional delegated spending for, for that bucket. Uh, if a CR is passed, then that, those funds will not ha- transpire. Um, but the, the, the NEPA, the environmental work, all the engineering and design plans will still be valid for years to come, so we'll be one step closer that if, if funding is approved, we now have a shovel-ready project.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, I'm forgetting that not everybody's been part of the long-term discussions on some of these.
My new guy.
So, anyone, any other questions on this? All right. And then, uh, Mayor Cooper will present some certificates for the ARPA state volleyball, volleyball champions and presentation of some extra mile awards. Then we will consider a permit street closure request for the Hula Day five K and Fun Run twenty twenty-five. Something's done every single year, I guess. Chief Moore's not in here. Okay. Is there anything different about this than what we normally do? Okay.
Evening, Mayor Cooper, council members. Uh, thank you for taking the time, uh, to speak about it. There are really no changes from the last year, the previous, uh, three years that we performed this event. Um, we've roughly had about a hundred eighty people that have come out, uh, to participate, and, uh, again, all proceeds go to support Enterprise State Community College and the cross-country team. Uh, no changes on timeframe, seven AM is where we're looking for road closure, expecting the event to occur between seven thirty and ten thirty, and expect to be cleaned up, uh, and, uh, open up the street by eleven AM in that morning. Any questions about the event for this year?
Okay. Um, no issues with closing East College Street? Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right. So then we'll have privilege of the floor, staff reports, we have no old business. We'll introduce planning, commission, recommendation, uh, to approve following request for the zoning of property. JLW Creative Solutions, uh, rezone two point three five acres from R two to PRD, Planned Residential District. Um, believe that we are just, yeah, we're calling for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for December sixteenth. I think this is the property that they were gonna do something much bigger on and then pulled it because of the concerns. That's the Becky, Becky Lane at Wyndham, yeah.
I know we had a hearing on something about Becky Lane, didn't we?
We did, but they pulled part of it. I think, is this the part that they pulled and?
It is, sir. There was two parcels that were in that original proposal. The first one was the larger parcel that went across the bottom that stretched all the way from Becky Lane, and there was a little small section, it was at the top, that they were gonna do townhouse development on. Um, there was a lot of the public that was against townhouse development in that, that location. Um, so the developer pulled that at that point to come back to work with staff to come up with a better solution, and what they have proposed now is actually a PRD, Planned Residential Development. Um, it, it very closely resembles an R three development, um, and, and for the most cases, it checks the box for ninety-nine percent of that. However, there were some areas because of the geographic layout of the lots that they, they didn't have the setbacks and such that they needed for one or two of the lots. So the lots are actually larger than R three, um, that was there, but they, they decided to PRD, so staff, we actually like that better, honestly, because that way, the public, a lot of times, will ask us when we rezone a piece of property, what the developer's planning to build, and during a typical rezone, you don't see that. You, um, you typically say, well, it's zoned for this use, and this is what they can do, but we don't have a set of development plans. But when they submit in a PRD like that, they actually submit in almost a preliminary plat with, uh, at least a thirty percent construction plans. So we know exactly where the houses are gonna be, the square footages, we can see the road layouts, we can see all that stuff. So the public actually knows what they're proposing to do on that piece of property. Um, so we, uh, we've talked to some of the property owners that were there the first time through, and they understand that it's very, very closely resembles what was approved previously, um, by the planning commission and by this body. Now, this has gone through, uh, planning commission, um, with an approval status on that, and it's up tonight for your consideration as well.
Okay. And, uh, we'll actually hold the public hearing December sixteenth, but introduce it tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. I thought that's what that property was, but.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay. And then establish regul- ordinance to establish regulation for blade signs. Um, I believe this is mainly dealing with Main Street, right?
For those of you who may not have been here on city council whenever this was last brought up in, I think, August, um, the reason for the changing of this, um, sign ordinance is that Main Street was given a twenty thousand dollar grant from Main Street, Alabama, for the purpose of providing a signage grant program to our downtown businesses. We are running this through our Friends of Main Street program, but in order to do so, we wanted to do it all legally within the city ordinances, and Ashley, um, found that there was an outdated code which stated that no signs could be overhanging the sidewalk, and so Thomas and Ashley have been working on the backend to amend that code and to bring it before you to see if it's something that we are willing to amend, because we cannot move forward with that grant program without first amending that code. So, Thomas.
So basically, what we've done is we have amended, or what we've proposed to you is to amend the code that prohibits any type of, uh, blade sign or projection over the sidewalk, uh, and with doing that, we've added definition of what a blade sign is, the size that's allowed, the type of architecture, uh, that's allowed for the sign, uh, things of that nature, uh, to try and make it where they can use these blade signs, but also make it where it's not going to be, uh, kinda cluttered, it's not gonna be too big for the building, too small for the building, uh, things of that nature. And so we've taken in like design, size, uh, the ability to see it while you're passing at the speed that you know you go, that you're going at on Main Street, which is twenty-five miles an hour, how it needs to be bigger, if it's, you know, up higher on the building. We've taken into consideration a lot of different aspects, and we've worked on it for about, uh, for a good measure of time, sending it back and revising it and things of that nature.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Um, is there any reason to suspend the rules or any urgency on this, or could be laid over to next council to actually vote on? Because we're just introducing it tonight according to the.
I don't think there's any reason to suspend the rules.
Okay. All right. So then we will, um, Mr. Tollis, you wanna speak to this next section here? Um, annual employee compensation.
Yeah, especially for our, our two new council members, this is something, you know, that was going on in the city when I got here. I don't know how many years Beverly, but probably all the years you've worked here, they've done some sort of wage, wage adjustment, uh, I think is the right name for it, can't call it a, a Christmas bonus or anything like that, but essentially, it, it was a way to give back to, to the employees something, um, in goodwill for the holiday season. So, given, um, the city's current financial state and conversation with the mayor and council president, we felt like we could afford, uh, to increase that. Um, last year, Leanne, you, you may need to help me with this, but it was about two, no, one fifty. Yeah, one fifty and seventy-five. So for, uh, full-time and part-time. So this would be a significant increase, uh, about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is the cost to the, to the city. Um, but we did, um, in our budget, we assumed some things about, um, our growth, where the economy was, we absorbed, uh, passing along, uh, health insurance premiums, but we only gave, if we're looking at a COLA, two and a half percent COLA versus about a three point nine percent, um, uh, inflation number for, uh, Consumer Price Index. So this would be a way that we could give, uh, a shot in the arm to our city employees, um, who, uh, you know, at times, just like a lot of people, um, in our community, struggle to put food on the table, um, especially when we're talking about the holiday season and, you know, buying presents for folks and doing those kinda things. So that, that was the, the general thought that we had, um, and, you know, a lot of those dollars get reverberated back into the local economy, hopefully, and help some of our small businesses that are also facing pressures with, um, uh, inflation.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments about this? All right. I think, uh.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have a request to, uh, purchase equipment for Parks and Recreation, a back code. Is this a budgeted item or?
Yes, sir, this is a FY twenty-six budgeted item.
Okay. Is there, I guess, uh... I know what a back code is, so I, I don't really have any questions. Anyone have any questions about this?
It's budgeted.
It's budgeted. It's already, it's been discussed, all right? Let's, thank you, let's move on then. All right, um, we have a re- uh, a request to authorize police chief to execute memorandum of understanding with Covenant Rescue Group. Um, what is the Covenant Rescue Group? Chief? Chief Moore? Uh, memorandum of understanding with the Covenant Rescue Group?
Yes, sir, this is a national group that assists us in training, um, in documentation and, um, assistance in locating, helping children, um, children that have been abused and neglected, uh, and they just assist us with training in order for us to get the free training for them to assist through grants and stuff. We have to enter MOU with them.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's for the children.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or? All right. Review and consider street lighting requests, Legends Phase Three subdivision, uh, request from Thomas Hardy to install nine seventy-six watt LED light fixtures in Legends Phase Three subdivision, annual cost of nine hundred six dollars and twelve cents.
Council, this is a, uh, typical subdivision, um, process. Whenever they come to for us, once they do the final plat, or potentially before the final plat, they will submit a street lighting plan, uh, to us. Our ordinance calls for them to be at least three hundred feet separation, um, with the street lights, they meet all the standards, uh, so this is just a standard procedure of going through with the new subdivision, and this is Phase Three of the Legends, uh, which is located off of, uh, Ozark Highway North.
Okay. All right, and then we have a request to change the council meeting time on December second because of the, um, tree lighting ceremony, and the request is to change from six PM to twelve PM in order to avoid conflict with the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony. Um, now, we had discussed potentially looking at different times, but feedback from most of the staff is they wouldn't be able to attend the council meeting if we did it any later, so, um, I know we had discussed this before the changeover, before you guys came on, but does anyone have any questions, concerns at this point? Okay. So, uh, we'll move that to twelve o'clock on our next council meeting, December second, to get it off of the tree lighting. We typically do that on this first meeting of December, it's because it's either the, uh, Christmas parade or the tree lighting falls on that Tuesday. And then request to close city offices for annual employee luncheon. Uh, this is something we typically do every year as well. Uh, we close all city offices from eleven to one to allow employees to participate in annual holiday luncheon at Enterprise Civic Center. Does anyone have any questions concerned about that issue? All right. And we'll do mayor's report, council comments, and adjourn until our eleven AM work session. Uh, and let's go back to our meeting agenda. Looks like we have a request for executive session, real estate, good name and character. Mr. Tollis, is there anything else that we wanna do in executive session besides what's on our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, um, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go in executive session.
Second? All right. And then, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, we will go to executive session, and, uh, we will do no further business until our six o'clock meeting.
Oh, you're good. I'm good. How are you? I got running ash right now because I've been freezing all day. Um, yeah, everything's good. Got fifty and legs, and that was a lot of work and everything. I don't think we, we missed you at the last meeting. I don't think you were here. Hmm. So you were one of the lucky old guys? Thank goodness. It went longer than it should have, but, hmm. I know. Mm-hmm. Nobody can work together and. Mm-hmm. 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 And, as you say, any higher than that level, I think it kinda starts, you know, I don't think this, I mean, of course, the state, I don't think it's as bad as the federal, of course, but. Yeah. Well, I'm glad to see you. We missed you at the last meeting, so. Yes, we did, you know, we get you. Well, that's what I told him. I said, that you are very, very dedicated, and I said, but I do tell him, I said, that there's an issue, he will bring it to the council's attention, that he's always quick to play, that he's, the city went way and beyond and did. Oh, I know they did. Hmm. Mm-hmm. Really? Other than I bet he knows Blake, because Blake and Casey live there in Bethany, so, it's, yeah. Uh-huh. Well, good to see ya.[430.14]
We have a request to authorize police chief to execute memorandum of understanding with Covenant Rescue Group. What is the Covenant Rescue Group? Chief? Chief Moore? Memorandum of understanding with Covenant Rescue Group?
Yes, sir. This is a national group that assists us in training, in documentation, and assistance in locating, helping children, children that have been abused and neglected. And they just assist us with training in order for us to get the free training for them to assist through grants and stuff. We have to enter MOU with them.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's for the children.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? All right. Review and consider street lighting requests, Legends Phase Three subdivision. Request from Thomas Hardy to install nine seventy-six watt LED light fixtures in Legends Phase Three subdivision. Annual cost of nine hundred six dollars and twelve cents.
Counsel, this is a typical subdivision process. Whenever they come to fore us, once they do the final plat, or potentially before the final plat, they will submit a street lighting plan to us. Our ordinance calls for them to be at least three hundred feet separation with the streetlights. They meet all the standards. So this is just a standard procedure of going through with the new subdivision. And this is Phase Three of the Legends, which is located off of Ozark Highway North.
All right, and then we have a request to change the council meeting time on December 2nd because of the tree lighting ceremony. And the request is to change from 6:00 PM to 12:00 PM in order to avoid conflict with the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony. We had discussed potentially looking at different times, but feedback from most of the staff is they wouldn't be able to attend the council meeting if we did it any later. So I know we had discussed this before the changeover, before you guys came on, but does anyone have any questions concerned at this point? Okay. So we'll move that to 12 o'clock on our next council meeting, December 2nd, to get it off of the tree lighting. We typically do that on this first meeting of December because it's either the Christmas parade or the tree lighting falls on that Tuesday. And then request to close city offices for annual employee luncheon. This is something we typically do every year as well. We close all city offices from 11 to 1:00 to allow employees to participate in annual holiday luncheon at Enterprise Civic Center. Does anyone have any questions concerned about that issue? All right. And we'll do mayor's report, council comments, and adjourn until our 11:00 AM work session. And let's go back to our meeting agenda. Looks like we have a request for executive session, real estate, good name and character. Mr. Tollis, is there anything else that we want to do in executive session besides what's on our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go in executive session.
Second, all right. And then all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, we will go to executive session, and we will do no further business until our 6:00 o'clock meeting.
Oh, you're good. I'm good. How are you? I got running out of breath right now because I've been freezing all day. Yeah, everything's good. Got fifty lakes and that was a lot of work and everything. I don't think we missed you at the last meeting. I don't think you were here. So you were one of the lucky old guys? Thank goodness. It went longer than it should have, but... I know. Nobody can work together and... And as you say, any higher than that level, I think it kind of starts... You know, I don't think the state, I mean, of course, the state, I don't think is as bad as the federal, of course, but... Well, I'm glad to see that we missed it in the last meeting. Yes, we did, you know, we didn't... Well, that's what I told him. I said, "You are very, very dedicated." And I said, "But I do tell him," I said, "if there's an issue, he will bring it to the council's attention." But he's always quick to play, if he feels the city went way beyond and did... Oh, I know they did. Really? Other than I bet he knows Blake because Blake and Tracy live there in downtown, so it's good. Uh-huh. Well, good to see ya.
That's what I was checking right now. Yes, sir, they are in that exact order. Is that the order you want them in?
Rearrange them.
Yep. So sorry. So if Blake is standing here, right? And then he's going to lead the men passing through?
Okay, we will call this meeting to order for the November eighteenth City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members are in attendance except for Councilman Johnson, who is not here tonight. Let's all stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. And we have, I believe, Dr. Amy Young with First Methodist Church.
Okay, there we go. Let's pray. God, we thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to gather together in your presence today. For you alone, we praise you and worship you and honor you because you alone are worthy. And we take a moment right now to acknowledge that you are the giver of good gifts, including this great and awesome city of Enterprise. We thank you, Lord, for the success and progress of this city and for the leaders that you have established. And we pray now for a fruitful council meeting tonight that honors you. Lord, bless this time that we have together tonight. It's in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you want me to with the pledge? All right. Call for a motion to approve the agenda of the meeting as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda of the meeting.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, the agenda has been approved. Now we will consider the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda has been distributed to each member of the council for review. They are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the city council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request of a member of the city council. I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
All right. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Mayor Cooper, I believe you have some certificates to give out tonight. Along with Blake Moore. Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few weeks ago, Enterprise Parks and Recreation was proud to host the state volleyball tournament at our brand-new facility. Hundreds of young athletes and their families came to Enterprise to compete. And tonight, we are proud to recognize some of our winners. At this time, I would like to call Blake Moore. Blake Moore, Interim Director of Community Service and Recreation, to help with this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're here to honor our fifth and sixth grade volleyball team. But I want to take a moment and go back in time a little bit because this is special. And it's a program that we built from the ground up about nine years ago. My wife came to me, who also coaches volleyball at the high school, and says, why isn't Parks and Rec doing volleyball? And I had just gotten there and I said, well, give me some time. I got to figure things out. And she kept pushing me and pushing me. And finally, nine years ago, in Moose Hope Gym, we discovered there are some holes in the floor, but they were for badminton. And we needed to get larger holes in the floor for volleyball. And so we went to drilling and were able to make two courts there in Moose Hope Gym, which had no AC at the time. And so it was very hot, but we had a lot of parents and girls on board and the excitement level was there. And, you know, when we did that nine years ago, the vision was to create a facility that would continue to see growth for our youth athletics and programs and to host tournaments as well. And through the vision of you, Mr. Mayor, and our council, which two of our former council members, Councilman Goolsbee and Councilman Townsend, who were on the council at the time, and our CFO, Leanne Schwartz, and our city administrator, Jonathan Tullis, bought into that vision. And we have now the brand-new Enterprise Recreation and Aquatics Center. And speaking to our two new council members, Councilman Walls, he's all about some Parks and Rec. Councilman Mack, I know you had a niece that was playing in the state tournament, but I think you were there because you heard we had Kanekka sausage dogs, and I know you're a big fan of that. But the excitement for Parks and Recreation is on the top of the charts right now. And I can't be more excited about our youth volleyball program and where it's at. Last year, we hosted the state tournament at Enterprise High School because our facility was being built. And at the time, it was the largest state tournament with forty teams. This year, we shattered that record and set a new state Alabama Recreation and Parks Association record with fifty-one total teams. And I continue or expect that to continue to grow as we continue. Next year, we've already won the bid to host again, so we're excited about that. We had over three thousand people come through our gates two weekends ago. And I want to take a minute to thank a couple people, the excitement and just the teamwork. I mentioned you, Mr. Mayor, and council, and our CFO, and Jonathan. But I also want to thank our city engineer, Mr. Barry Mott. He knew that we needed a parking lot with all the people. And him and Shannon Roberts and their Public Works and engineering crew. I want to thank you guys for making that parking lot happen. We needed it. And with all those people coming through. So nothing but good things. We had people all the way from We had people all the way from Huntsville, north is Huntsville, to south is Mobile and everywhere in between that came through our city two weekends ago. And two guys that are here tonight that I put a lot of pressure on and probably more than they probably needed, but I looked them square in the eyes and said, hey, guys, make me proud this weekend. And they're here tonight. And that's our athletic supervisor, Tyler Kaiser, and our athletic coordinator, Ian Terrio. And Ian, he had a couple appointments with his children today, and he wasn't going to be here, but he felt like this was important. And so, he had made the trip back in. And thank you for being here. So, I want to give these two guys a round of applause for making volleyball happen. Next, I want to thank you, the parents that are here tonight. We couldn't do this without you. You buy into what we're preaching, and we thank you for signing your daughters up to play youth sports with us, and especially volleyball. A lot of you have been with me from the get-go, and sad to see you're about to graduate out of the program, so that makes me feel real old right now. But thank you for believing in what we do. Thank you for believing in Parks and Recreation. Our youth sports numbers over the last five years have grown by fifty percent in all sports that we do. So, we're excited about that, but really want to thank you, parents, for your investment in Parks and Recreation and your children. And last but not least, I want to thank these girls right here who we're about to honor. You guys, hands down, as Mr. Tice came up and told me, we got some dogs. That's what you call some sure enough bona fide athletes. And I said, we don't think you can say that about girls volleyball. You say that in football, but we got some top-notch athletes right there, first-class girls. You guys laid it all in line, defeated Chelsea in the finals, and couldn't be prouder of you guys, and honor well deserved. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is our 2025 ARPA State Volleyball Champions. Let's give them a round of applause. And at this time, as we call your name, ladies, if you will come forward, and we have a certificate that Mr. Mayor will present to you. Zoe Bray. And last but not least, I want to, you know, I thanked about everybody I could, but youth sports and Parks and Recreation doesn't happen without volunteer coaches. And just as much as we need parent buy-in to what we're doing, we need coach buy-in. And sometimes, it's pulling teeth and twisting arms to get people to volunteer coach, but these two right here have been with me pretty much since day one. And I hope, I know they're probably going to give their retirement speech after this is over, but thankful for these two and what they've meant to not only volleyball, but your support to me as we've gone through this together. So, Assistant Coach Julie Hodge. And last one, what makes Enterprise really special is for people who grew up here, and as you grow older, you get reunited with people, and you never think, you know, or thought in a million years that, you know, you'd be the Parks and Rec director, and you'd have one of your closest buddies that you grew up and played sports with coaching volleyball for you. But this guy, between him and his wife, and she's here tonight, Brenn Milliner, she also was a volleyball coach for us and coached the older daughter, Ansley, who's now playing for Enterprise High School. But they might be the most decorated state championship-winning coaches in Parks and Rec history. And I think we're tied. Did we tie? Six, six, seven? Something like that? So, that's what the kids are telling me, right? So, proud of this guy. He's a good friend of mine. He's almost like a good neighbor. But Head Coach Lee Milliner.
Tonight, I would like to take a moment to recognize two of our city employees of the Enterprise Water Department employees whose actions reflect the very best of our organization. Adam Bonin and Josh Brown. Would you please come forward and air here? On October twenty-third, around lunchtime, a member of our community witnessed a water department truck stop at the scene of an accident near Weeder Street and Park Avenue. Without hesitation, the two employees inside, Adam and Josh, got out to make sure everybody involved was safe. They checked on the individuals and the vehicles, and then began directing traffic until the first responders arrived. Their quick responses, calm presence, and willingness to help in a moment of need made a real difference. And importantly, they did it safely and professionally. A resident took the time to report what they saw and to commend these men for their actions. That kind of recognition from the public speaks volumes about character. Adam and Josh, you set an example for all of us. You represent what it means to serve the community with integrity, compassion, and dedication. I'm proud to present each of you with the city's Extra Mile Award for going far and beyond the city's call of duty. Thank you both for the work you do every day to keep our city running.
of the first public entity in thirty years, look how important they are to the simple act and to do that action for the city. There's nobody's right to do the action, and that's another reason. But for them to respond quickly and be present around the red cloud, the rest of that can just speak volumes for us. And I want to thank them very much.
And I join with thanks on that as well. Always appreciate it when someone takes a moment to help someone even if it's not necessarily their job to do so. We'll now consider a permit and street closure request for the Hula Day 5K and Fund Run 2025. We call for a motion to approve the following permit request as submitted. Hula Day 5K and Fund Run 2025, event time and date, seven-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM, Saturday, December twentieth, 2025. Street closure, seven AM to eleven AM. And the closure area is East Colton Street, Edwards to Main. We discussed this in work session. Do I have a motion to approve the permit request as submitted?
Move to approve the permit request as submitted.
Second.
Was there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. This is the time of the privilege of the floor, part of the meeting where anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to address the council may do so for three minutes. If they choose, staff, mayor, and council will respond to your comments during the appointed times later in the meeting. Repetitive and disruptive and disparaging comments will not be tolerated. If you're found out of order, your privileges can and will be revoked. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? All right. If you'll come to the podium and state your name, please.
Mayor Cooper and the council, I'm Mary Wiley. And I'm here, I've been coming for years, and I would like for your permission for us, this Good Samaritan helping hand in the ministry alliance, to give us permission to celebrate the Memorial March for Dr. Martin Luther King, which would be January the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-sixth, at two o'clock PM on the city hall steps. And that, and if so, we would only be marching, just like we've been doing, from city hall to Liberty Baptist Church, which is on Highway twenty-seven.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any staff reports? All right. There's no old business on the agenda tonight, so we will introduce a planning commission recommendation. Introduce for the record a recommendation from the Enterprise Planning Commission to approve the following request for the rezoning of property. A request by J L W Creative Solutions LLC on behalf of Justin Walker to rezone two-point-three-five acres from R2 Medium Density Single Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential District located on Becky Lane at Wyndham Drive. Introduce ordinance eleven eighteen twenty-five, providing for the rezoning of two-point-three-five acres of land owned by J L W Creative Solutions LLC from R2 Medium Density Single Family District Residential District to PRD Planned Residential District located on Becky Lane at Wyndham Drive. A call for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for December We also introduce ordinance eleven eighteen twenty-five A, providing to amend section eighteen dash fourteen of the Enterprise City Code, overhanging name signs to establish regulations for blade signs. This will be carried over to the next meeting. Review and consider resolution eleven eighteen twenty-five. Introduce and call for consideration of resolution eleven eighteen twenty-five, providing for an annual one-time compensation adjustment of five hundred dollars to all full-time employees and a two-hundred-dollar adjustment to all part-time and seasonal employees of the City of Enterprise to be paid in the month of December. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution eleven eighteen twenty-five.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Introduce and call for consideration of a request from Parks and Recreation Superintendent Landon Adams to purchase one Kubota backhoe loader landscaper from Bondi's Kubota through the Sourcewell Purchasing Program at a cost of fifty-nine thousand, twenty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the purchase request as submitted.
I second.
All right. Is there any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll also mention that this is a budgeted item, so. This has already been discussed in budget process. Authorized police, call for a motion to authorize the police chief to execute a memorandum of understanding between Covenant Rescue Group and Enterprise Police Department for a one-year term. Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the police chief to execute the memorandum of understanding as submitted.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Introduce and call for consideration of request from Thomas Hardy, Assistant Director of Engineering, to install nine seventy-six watt LED fixtures in the Allegiance Phase Three subdivision at an annual cost of nine-hundred-and-six dollars and twelve cents. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the street lighting request as submitted.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Call for a motion to change the December second, 2025 council meeting from six PM to twelve PM in order to avoid conflict with the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Enterprise Farmers Market.
Move to change the December second, 2025 council meeting time from six PM to twelve PM.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And just to remind, the work session will be starting one hour ahead, so work session will be at eleven o'clock, and council at twelve. Introduce and call for consideration of a request to close all city offices from eleven AM until one PM on Wednesday, December tenth, 2025, to allow city employees to participate in the annual holiday luncheon at the Enterprise Civic Center. Do I have a motion?
Move to close all city offices on Wednesday, December tenth, 2025, from eleven AM to one PM.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
This weekend marks the start of the holiday season here in Enterprise. I want to give a special thank you to our Public Works and Park and Recreation staff. They've been working hard to deck the halls all around our city, and it really makes Enterprise shine this time of the year. Thanksgiving is next week. We have so much to be thankful for, from the roof of our heads to the food on our tables and the family and friends we get to share it with. And so, all take a we get to share it with. Let's all take a moment to count our blessings and remember what reality matters. Chief David asked me to remind everyone that while the fire department love to visit each of you, your home, please be careful with your holiday cooking. Leave the turkey frying to the professionals and consider supporting some of the many great restaurants we have in town that are serving delicious holiday meals. A reminder that the City of Enterprise offices will be closed for Thanksgiving the day after so our staff can spend time with their families. I'm proud to serve you, Mayor, and I'm grateful for your support. May God bless Enterprise and may God bless America. Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
Ms. Wiley, thank you for your coming to us. We know y'all normally submit a request form, and Ms. Beverly is going to help make sure you get that taken care of, okay? So I certainly want to congratulate our volleyball champions. I'm looking for any council meeting now that Mr. Moore is going to put in a bid to be the official emcee for the city as it's appearing, but we'll see what 2026 brings in that avenue. But very good job, Mr. Moore. We always love to hear you applaud our, our athletes with the Parks and Recs Department. And congratulations to our gentlemen that received the, the award tonight for their good deeds. It's always good to have our citizens recognizing the good things that our staff are doing. I certainly want to say we're grateful for our leadership with our city, our department heads, our staff, all of our workers, as well as all of our residents, and certainly want to wish everyone a very blessed and a safe Thanksgiving.
I would also like to reiterate that we're very proud of the young ladies for winning the state title, and I think we're going to build Lee Milliner a statue. Might have to get some grant money up for that, Jonathan. But, and then Blake and Landon, of course, I was at the volleyball state tournament like Blake mentioned, and there were a lot of people there. And a lot of the folks from Birmingham that, you know, my family knew, they won't know where to go. So we sent them to downtown Enterprise and I think they covered it up and spent a lot of money. It'd be interesting seeing the tax receipts from that weekend when you get that many visitors in town. So it's great for the city. And we also want to recognize, as we did earlier, the gentleman from the water department. I'd kind of heard about what had happened there, and it's nice to know that we have good people on staff.
Yep, just want to say ditto to Councilman Rich, Councilman Mack. Thank you to our staff. Thank you for everyone, all the, I mean, Enterprise has a great staff. They're here at all these council meetings, and I appreciate seeing their dedication to the city. Appreciate the water employees that did that plus one, that went above and beyond, wasn't just trying to get to lunch or go about their day, that they stopped and did what they're supposed to do, help, help Enterprise. And congratulations, just like they said, to the state volleyball champions. I wanted to jump down and shake everyone their hands too. I'm so excited for them. So just awesome to see great things happening in Enterprise, and it's because of volunteers like Mr. Miller and the hard work that our Parks and Rec Department puts in to make sure that kind of stuff happens. So thank you, guys.
All right, I think it's already been said by my colleagues, so I'm just going to say ditto, and we are adjourned until 11 a.m. Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025.
What's that?
I grabbed it mine.
Sure, man, sure thing. You know, at one time, we asked good people, and to do things like that, it gives them, it clears them to kind of move on and make others, you know. And, you know, coming up on an accident, you being a part of the rescue squad or the first responder, you know what it's like, because sometimes people do that, they're going to get run over themselves, you know what I mean? Yeah, that's right. So you just, you know, have to look both ways. But I'm proud of them, and I, you know, if I have a chance to, at the Christmas party, you know, I'll just tell them, you know, we appreciate all of them, you know, for what they do. You out there in the cold and all that stuff, man. Yeah, the pipes start busting. Yes, sir. Okay, man, take care. Yeah, okay, have a good one.
Mayor?
Have a good evening. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
This is the vacation with the wife, right? And they have all the family before the wedding? Who is the wedding? So it's just a big family gathering? Is it going to, well, I guess it will be our Thanksgiving up there, right?
Yeah, we're coming back Wednesday, before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Because it's our turn to be in.